Good morning, and we will call this meeting of the Bucks County Commissioners, actually the date, August 7th, 2024, to order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And our clerk, of course, Eileen Alabar, will lead us in that. Thank you. So if it's August, we know it's Grange Fair time and everybody's favorite. And we will begin with a proclamation from Commissioner Harvey. And Amber Delany and Danielle Tomlinson are here, I believe. So we're going to read the proclamation, and then you can come up and speak.
Okay, thank you. Whereas Middletown Grange, number 684, has been an essential component of the Bucks County agricultural community since 1876, seeking to unite its members in a bond of fraternity for prosperous agriculture, practical education, and better community life. And whereas the Middletown Grange is a grassroots, nonpartisan organization, which has evolved from a group primarily of farmers to include people from all walks of life, to promote programs for rural communities on the state, local, and national levels, along with community service activities that have gained widespread recognition. And whereas the first Middletown Grange Fair was in 1948, when Grange members entered a Farm Journal contest to raise 300 bushels of corn per acre, and invited the local community to take part in the harvest at the fair then held at Heston Manor Farm in Yardley. And whereas in 1867, the Middletown Grange Fair moved to its present location in Wrightstown Township, with permanent buildings to accommodate multiple events and exhibits, house livestock, and provide eating facilities in a new Grange Hall. Whereas the Grange Fair brings the community together and showcases the talents of our neighbors, from 4H youth to adults as they enter thousands of items for judging, ranging from cakes to quilts. And whereas the members of the Grange are leaders in maintaining the honorable tradition of farming in Bucks County, which was the foundation of the county's early economy and continues today as one of its most important vocations. Now, therefore, do we, the Board of Commissioners of Bucks County, hereby proclaim August 14th to the 18th, 2024, as Middletown Grange Fair Week throughout the county of Bucks. In doing so, we salute the members of the Middletown Grange, number 684, the fair directors, and their dedicated staff for all their hard work and commitment to holding one of the premier community events in Bucks County. We offer congratulations on many wonderful years of family entertainment, education, and excitement, and we look forward to many more years of the Middletown Grange Fair.
Thank you very much. And Amber and Danielle, if you'd like to come up and tell us a little bit about what we're going to see this year?
Good morning. Thank you very much for proclaiming this Grange Fair Week. We're very excited to welcome everyone from Bucks County to our event. This year, we're looking forward to the agricultural showcase of Bucks County. So seeing all that are from, everyone from kids to adults, all the projects on which they've worked over the last year. We're hoping that the members of the county, like the new digs, you guys will be moved from a tent into a building. So if we have any unfortunate rain, which we're not going to have rain, but if we do, you'll have a nice dry place to stand and visit with all the members of Bucks County. We're looking forward to the tractor parade, to the chicken dinners, all the traditional things that join us every year in August. And we thank you very much for your dedicated support to the success of our event. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay, going to public comment, Andy Warren.
Morning Commissioners. To the extent possible, could you fill in some of the details of item number 14, $85,000 payout to three different aspects for a law settlement? And on the second page of the personnel list, under Corrections, requisition number 42 to 51, it says effective date is July 29th, 2024, to July 27th, 2024. So the effective date is two days backward for the list of these, or is that just a misprint? Or how's it work? Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Mackhouse.
Ed Mackhouse, Bucks County, a former teacher, scientist, engineer. I taught for 10 years in difficult schools. I'd like to comment, compliment Commissioners for all the good work they've done, and all the budgets, and all these millions of dollars they handle. I know it's a good job keeping people honest and working hard. My background's physics and science, and I like to look at statistics. So one of the categories is juveniles that don't have a home to stay in. This involves family conflicts. The county must, you must be doing a good job because it looks like there are other counties sending juveniles, incarcerated juveniles, here to be taken care of. So I know you're all doing a good job, but I'm looking for statistics and ways to evaluate and improve things. A good example of a good family would be President Trump. President Trump doesn't take any drugs. His family, all his children, work. Compare that to Biden's family, Hunter Biden. And then government officials, it's a tough job being a government official, but a judge or prosecutor should be nonpartisan. The tragedy with the persecution of President Trump and the January 6 people, this is unheard of in history. It's like a third world country. Pamela Harris and Waltz, Tim Waltz, he's from Minnesota, they had the big American flag behind them. Whereas the Democratic Party has history of not standing up for the American flag and supporting that stuff. Also, the eight-point Muslim star is now the official state flag in Minnesota, where Waltz comes from. So he says all the great things he's done, but there was a report of $250 million that should have gone to children and is not accounted for. So they have all big smiles. Jocelyn Shapiro didn't have a big smile. His smile was upside down. The Democrats are all called upon to support this. But just as, I know that Trump isn't perfect, and I'm not willing to point out any defects, he and his family is much better. And I think Governor Shapiro would have been much better for the Democrats, and he'd be better, he would overshadow Pamela Harris, because they had to do something. They had all this money that came to Biden, and he couldn't do the job. So the Democrats have a real bad, tough job on their convention to show that they represent the people and to see what they say.
You have a right to say anything you want, but I just wanted to say to the general public, that was an offensive comment that you made about flags. And then we will move on to Amber, no, I guess, Bill Everett.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Bill Everett, and I am an elected committeeman in Middletown Township. My topic today is election integrity. I spoke at the June 5th meeting about the required 2% recount and logic and accuracy testing. I would like to follow up on the 2% election manual recount requirement with some additional information and a request for your comment. Our 2% election hand recount requirement is clearly documented in the report issued by the Secretary of State, Al Smith, on June 30th, 2023. The report is titled "PA Department of State Certification Document for the Clear Ballot/Clear Vote." Below are three quotes from the PA Election Code and the Department of State Certification Document that I would like you to comment on. Quote number one from the PA Election Code, 25 PS 3031.17 requires statistical recount of random sample of ballots after each election using manual, mechanical, or electronic devices of a type different than those used for the specific election. Quote number two from the PA Election Code, 25 PS 3031.5 states that "the county board shall comply with the requirements for the use of the electronic voting system as set forth in the report by the Secretary of the Commonwealth." Quote number three, "The Clear Ballot/Clear Vote 2.3 Electronic Voting System was certified on June 30th, 2023 by the Al Smith Secretary of Commonwealth with the condition that the recount required by 3031.17 must be conducted via a manual count of the voter-marked paper ballots exclusively. Therefore, although Section 3031.17 allows for a recount by hand or machine, compliance with the Section 3031.5 requires the county to follow the exclusive hand count condition laid out by the Secretary of the Commonwealth Certification Document." So a review of the formal election reports from the last election indicates that 36 counties specifically stated that they perform the 2% manual recount as required by law. Delaware County and Philadelphia County are included in the list that perform the manual recount. I respectfully request that you comment on how the county will comply with the 2% manual requirement for November's election. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Deal.
Hi, Liz Deal, Sellersville. I wanted to speak on poll books today. I am a judge of elections in Sellersville, District One. I'm also a committee woman in Sellersville, District One. And I just want to say that I very much appreciate the fact, I want to go on record saying that I appreciate how much, that we have paper poll books on Election Day, and we need them to use as backup because the electronic poll books, they could go down. And I don't know hearsay here and there that maybe we won't have the poll books at one point, but I feel it's very, very important that we continue and always have these paper poll books in case something goes down, and we would have election integrity, which is extremely important these days. I also want to go on record saying that I am asking for a hand count of the paper ballots for the presidential race in November. I will personally learn the process, do whatever I can to help for hand counting the paper ballots. And I know there's a lot of other people that will. I mean, I'm there already, and all the workers are there, working hard, and it really wouldn't be much to ask if we got this together and we did it. I know it sounds like, I wouldn't say it's not a job that's going to take work, but I do think there's a lot of people that want to do it. And I just wanted to go on record saying that I would be involved, and I'm for it, and I support it very much. And I forget my other question, it was last minute, but thank you for your time.
That's Ross.
Good morning. That's Ross from Bedminster Township. I'm going to begin my comments by reviewing a comment that was made by Mr. Harvey the first Wednesday of January. In your comments, you said that, gee, I lost it. I lost it. You said that we are now in an election year, and things are going to get tense. You said that there are conspiracy theories were going to start, and they've already begun today, that day. I would just like to draw a parallel between conspiracy theories and reasonable doubt. And I want to talk about reasonable doubt. Reasonable doubt is defined judiciously as such doubt as would cause a reasonable person to hesitate before acting in a manner of importance. We have reasonable doubt. Shapiro created the Election Threat Task Force. He included CISA, the National Guard Cyber Division, the Department of Homeland Security, local law enforcement. What was that for? July 19th, worldwide, the Microsoft computers and servers went down. That is, that is a critical cyber attack. And I'm wondering if maybe that was practice for days to come. I'm just wondering. There's been threats that the grid's going to go down. There's been threats of uprisings, there's able-bodied fighting, men from Asia are coming across our border. These are concerns. And then there was the attempted assassination of President Trump. The public has a cause for reasonable doubt. We see these things in our culture. We see them happening. Our eyes are open, and we're not asleep anymore. Just because we don't agree with some of the ideologies and thoughts out there doesn't mean that we're liars either. So hand counting is the answer. The advantages of hand counting are no equipment to test, maintain, and secure, no equipment breakdowns, human eyes look at the vote, and each one will be able to discern the voter's intent because we're looking at it. Precinct reconciliation happens at the precinct, not at the Board of Elections. Voter lists via poll books and number of ballots cast will match. We are asking for a recount of the presidential election.
Thank you. Liz Yost. Yeah, I'm sorry if you didn't hear me. Liz Yost.
Liz Yost, Northampton Township. Last month, a global computer outage disrupted everything from airports to the banking system. According to an article in the Tucson Sentinel online paper, this outage crippled the electronic systems of Arizona's two largest counties. These systems were used for every in-person voting, early in-person voting, causing election officials to quickly divert to backup plans to keep early voting open for the state's primary election. The breakdown affected the devices that Maricopa and Pima Counties use at voting locations to check voters in, verify voter eligibility, and print ballots. I would like to know what backup plans Bucks County has in case of any type of emergency on Election Day, November the 5th. What happens if there is another computer outage, such as the CrowdStrike disaster last month? The Board of Elections may not be able to function. What happens if the power goes out in any portion of the county? If so, you wouldn't be able to run the machines at the polls or in central tabulation. One just never knows what could happen. I would like to know that the Bucks County Board of Elections has the capability to ensure that the people who want to vote in person will be able to do so. The ability to count the ballots by hand is imperative so that we can have a timely tabulation of the vote for Bucks County. Do you have documented election disaster recovery plans? If so, could you please publish those plans to the public to give confidence that you are ready for a disaster? I'd also like to know if you regularly test those disaster recovery plans. I agree with Liz that every precinct should have paper poll books available in case of emergency or electronic failure. Hand counting is also the only way to ensure that the votes that go into the in-person voting polling machine matches the sheet of paper that comes out of that machine. The same is true of the central tabulation machine. The voters of Bucks County know that this is true. Why don't you acknowledge this fact? The voters of Bucks County want to be assured that their election has been conducted in a proper manner. The best way to do that is to actually hand count even more than 2% of the votes. We are asking you to at least follow the law as described by Bill. Also, since I have a few seconds left, I'd like to request that we have some meetings in the evening, some kind of town hall, so that we can have discussions with you, and so that people who work and are not able to be here during the day can enjoy this public discourse. Thank you.
First of all, on the personnel issue, it was a wrong date last month, as I understand it should have said 27 instead of 29. So it just needed to be corrected. The second thing is, we're going to continue to follow the state law on everything to do with the Board of Elections. And finally, I'm going to let our legal advisor tell about those settlements.
Sure, I'd be happy to explain that the items 14A through C relate to an employment law case that was filed. This is approval for a settlement and by way of explanation for the split in the payments. One is to counsel, and the other two are to the complainant herself and split between back pay and compensatory damages. Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. I'd like to motion to approve items 1 through 20E as well as the minutes from the July 24th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And on to personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions for today?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey, do you have the board appointments?
Yeah, for the Bucks County Human Relations Council, a new appointment, three-year term for Ms. Melissa Kornick. Term will end 8/1/2027. Make the motion for her appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under other civics, we have the Bristol Riverside Theater, annual $30,000, Final Farewell, $1,200, the Lee Lekkerman Foundation, $1,000, Penridge Music Association, $300, and the Robert W. Bracken American Legion Cadet Mural Fund, $250. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Operating Officer's report, Ms. McKevitt.
Thank you, Commissioner. A couple of things. First, I'm going to defer to Margie Kenny to talk a little bit about the cooling centers that have been open the past few days. Cooling centers that have been open the past few days because of the heat and the weather?
Thanks, Margie. We've had a number of activations of our cooling centers around the county. We have, I believe, eight or nine now that are participating agencies, mostly senior centers. A couple of our borough buildings have served in that capacity, too. We've seen several hundred people who've taken advantage of them since we started it this season. It's been very well received from the community, and it really is a benefit for those who are struggling to find a place to get out of the heat during these really oppressive hot days.
Thank you. Thank you. And we appreciate the time and effort that the senior centers and other facilities spend on keeping those facilities open for our residents. A couple other items I'd like to mention. The Parks and Rec Department is working on a plan for park and recreation, and they've opened up a survey for our residents to take. And we would greatly appreciate it if the residents would go on the county website or call the office to participate in this survey, because it will help guide the plan in the future in preparing our parks and our open spaces for activity and use by our residents. And that will be open, I believe, for the next few weeks to help guide us in that effort. And then also, household hazardous waste is this Saturday in Ben Salem at the high school. It's a popular event, as always, and we hope you will participate in that event as well. And that concludes my report. Oh, one more thing, just to make mention. We have changed the Commissioners' meetings, meeting the end of this month from the 28th to, I'm sorry, from the 21st to the 28th.
We will be meeting on the 28th?
Correct. Just want to make the mention of that.
And the solicitor's report?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just one item to report. The Board held its standing executive session yesterday, August 6th, with staff and legal counsel present to discuss personnel matters pending a prospective litigation and to receive confidential legal advice. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And Commissioners, comments? Commissioner Deidre Alamo?
No comments today, I'm sure. Sorry, a few things just to address. You know, I've heard, and, you know, again, it'll be the silly season because it's election year. But just a comment on the often-made, quite frankly, stupid comment about the Minnesota state flag. Minnesota is the North Star state, and so the state flag reflects a North Star, okay? So apologize if it ruptures the, quite frankly, racist approach to that comment, that belief, but, you know, I'm kind of tired. Excuse me. You had your time, Mr. Mackhouse. In terms of conspiracy theories, having read and taught and loved history my whole life, just about, or taught it for 26 years, you know, the sort of absence of evidence and the constant wish to believe something that's true because it makes you feel better, you know, and the echo chambers that exist really give conspiracy theory all the oxygen they need to live. Under President George W. Bush, there was a study that was done under his administration of voter fraud in the United States of America. Now, this was in the early 2000s, when obviously he was president. That study found that voter fraud was essentially nonexistent in the United States of America, okay? Under President Trump, under President Trump, he appointed the Secretary of State of Kansas, whose name I forget because it wasn't that noteworthy, to lead a voter integrity investigation, gave him carte blanche to go all over the country.
gave him carte blanche to go all over the country and investigate claims of voter fraud all over the United States of America. This was something he did almost immediately upon taking office, 2017. The study was never published. The study quietly ended because the individual who was sent out to do that work basically found nothing. And so rather than admit that he couldn't find anything, he simply just stopped the whole investigation. What we do have are people threatening our elections. The fact we received a bulletin from the Director of National Intelligence last week about foreign actors, this went out to elections directors all over the country. Foreign actors, mostly from Russia, but also from Iran, using social media, using, in some cases, paid columnists and individuals in the United States of America, getting money, being paid by foreign governments to sow division in this country. You know, and so that is happening. And so a lot of the information that people see, especially in social media, or on, you know, if they're reading different kinds of news agencies, quote-unquote, "news agencies", you know, the usual rule of thumb I have, and I tell people this, if what you're hearing in the news or some meme that you see on your phone or on your computer, if it seems too good to be true and is perfectly aligned with everything you believe to be true about some other group of Americans, it's probably not true. Okay? In terms of uprisings, we did have an uprising to overthrow the elections system of the United States of America. It happened on January 6, 2021. And in terms of being asleep, yes, people are still asleep, lulled to sleep by the melodic tones, excuse me, I'm speaking, lulled to sleep by the melodic tones of the echo chambers that people lock themselves into, not just on the right, I will say, okay? Machines are more accurate than hand counting that's been shown, ad infinitum. Are there risks that machines could shut down? Sure. You know, the machines could break. The machines we used to use when I first started voting, the mechanical ones where we pushed the lever down and the gear turned in the back, they broke, that's why we stopped using them, you know, because they were 50 years old, and I think they were bought through the Eisenhower administration, and they just didn't work anymore. We do have protocols in place if there's a power outage, that's obviously the good thing about paper ballots. You simply mark the paper ballot, you put it in the bag, the zippered, locked, sealed bag, and at the end of the night, those bags are brought, you know, to the Board of Elections and when power is restored, wherever happens to be restored, they're counted on the machines by staff here who are professional, who take their jobs very seriously, and I will continue to defend them because I think the people who come here questioning our elections, not only are they sowing seeds of division, doing it at the behest unknowingly of foreign actors or people who only care about themselves, but you're also, quite frankly, slandering the people who work in this building, who work hard every single day to make sure people get registered, to make sure the registrations count, to make sure that our polls are open and staffed and functioning, and make sure elections get counted the way they're supposed to be, and they'll continue to be that way. They were like that before I got here, they were like that before Commissioner Marsekeli got here, they were like that 41 years ago before Ms. McKevitt got here, sorry. Okay? All right? Okay? So they will continue to be that way. So getting a little tired, quite frankly, of the nonsense, and appreciate people's right to speak. We have a right to speak, too. So, thank you.
I also appreciate that you're speaking the truth on that. I just want to clarify one more time. Our August 21 meeting is canceled. We will have that meeting on August 28, and our September 4 meeting is also canceled. So we're meeting August 28, and see you then. So thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.